Not bad.
All right, Bannock County Commissioners are in session on Tuesday, April 8th. Starting us off today, leadoff hitter is Ms. Klowzer today.
Mr. Klowzer, Congresswoman, do you want to go into executive or do you just want to not talk names?
Let's see if we can not talk names.
Okay, that should be easy. I'll gather these back when we're done. And I emailed a copy to Matthew, so he's got this. This quarter, we have fourteen hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-two cents in unemployment that is going to be due. We still have a credit of sixty-three hundred dollars. And after this payment, we'll have just under, or just over forty-eight hundred dollars remaining. I just need the board's review and approval.
Any questions?
So are some of these going to drop off?
Potentially. The temp employees will pay maybe six months. They should be coming back to work here shortly, depending on the position.
This last one, how long, they be eligible?
Eighteen months. Is that how long?
Depends on how many quarters.
Potentially.
Well, let's take my word.
The one in the corner, it's obviously dropping off.
Well, that's a credit.
No.
That's a payback.
That's the payback.
Yeah.
Okay, there's.
Yeah, that one's been a payback for a bit.
I see the print. I don't have any other questions.
Me neither.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and approve the benefits for unemployment.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Should be all there. I don't see Todd, so Jared.
Good morning. Jared Marchand, the Truimore District Manager. Good morning. I wanted to come back to you guys and make one more request this year for use of some opioid fundings for a training. After I came and chatted with you last time and was booking that, I just started thinking, this training is getting so expensive for us to send people to. Like, as I just went through it, and I've been working on trying to find alternate trainings that are a little bit cheaper, maybe a little bit closer, and that provide kind of the same educational, like, outlook that the national one goes to. Although the national one is good and it talks about standards and best practices. This one that I'm requesting is the emerging drug trends one. Now, one really kind of goes more into what is, they're using, what they're happening, what the effects are, and what the new trends are, such as like being able to go into the gas station and buy mushrooms or other substances right at the counter that will mimic other drugs that they're using. Ashley Bringhurst and I went last year on a scholarship, and I really talked to her about maybe bringing people to it and giving them the option and taking it back to their teams of which one do you feel is better, which one do you want to send your team to? So my request would be for five of us to go. I'm going to take all the coordinators and I'm going to get opioid funding out of one of the other counties to take our South County coordinator. So all the coordinators can go. They'll have gone to both conferences this year, and they can go back to their team and say, here's the benefits of both of these, and maybe start splitting their teams up. So you won't typically see me come and ask to send the same people to two conferences every year, but you'll see me probably make, if I need to, requests to send people to two different conferences, just because they're so vastly different. Ashley and I really took a ton away from this one last year. I came back and was able to sit down with my team and be like, have you ever looked on Snapchat at this, like, for the probation officers? And it really just went through, like, dealing with the people, the things that they're doing, and basically how accessible things are to mimic other stuff that would otherwise be illegal. So I just, I wanted to request for five of us to go to see if we could just kind of come back as a team of coordinators and take back to our teams and say, hey, this is what we learned at this conference, this is what we learned at the other conference, and next year, you guys pick which one you feel is more beneficial, instead of all of us trying to go to a conference for the National Drug Court Association where there's ten thousand people and we're fighting for two thousand rooms, and it's, it just keeps getting more expensive and more expensive. I just want to offer good training for our drug court. I think Ashley and I have a pretty strong team, and, you know, treatment and the court, we work together pretty closely to make sure that all of our people are trained and that they're on the same page. So that was, that was my request in this. It's a not typical year, but I figured I might as well ask and see if that was something that we could do in hopes to kind of save the courts and our counties a little bit of money next year when it comes time to, to training.
Questions?
I don't have any problem. I mean, but every county got opioid funds. Are we asking all the other counties to do this? I mean, because all I see here is Bannock County's opioid settlement.
Yeah, yes. So Kathy works in Caribou, Bear Lake, and Franklin County. So Franklin County and Bear, or Caribou County, I think, will split her costs. So, yeah, if they participate in those other counties, even the D6 people, I ask for them to do it. Like, last year, Power County is the one who sent us to get the training. That's how we learned about it, and we went and spent two days there. So, yep.
But like Teton County, that we're still doing D6, right?
Yes.
And are we including them in some of these discussions?
I can ask.
I mean, I'm here to ask.
No, I a hundred percent.
If we're going outside our county and
Yeah.
and getting their, they're getting the benefit of all this and
Right.
But they, but they, we make, we make good money off of them, but we just did a report to the D6 Board the other day, and we don't, they incur, we incur no cost by supporting Teton County. It is only money in. So, and I think Oneida County is, you've talked with Oneida County a little bit about this. I've talked with Lon, he asked me about it a little bit, and we told him, I told him how we do this. It's no taxpayer dollars. It's all grant funds, so.
And I'll meet with Oneida County on Monday, because they're going to send some people to the National Drug Court Training too. But yes, I, as the district manager, I work hard on making sure that that is fair, so it's not all one incurred by a different county, or one county's incurring all the cost. I, I like to spread that out.
I say, whenever I see D6, like, because it is all the counties.
Yeah. And I guess it was just D6 treatment, so Ashley in one person. But, yep, that does include all of the counties a hundred percent.
But I, no, I think that it's a good deal, and we have the funds.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good with it. I don't see anything wrong with asking Teton, but I sure wouldn't push very hard because of the revenue stream that's coming back our direction.
Right, and then
It's not a bad ask.
No, not at all.
If they got funds that they don't know what else to use them for.
Right.
I'm okay with that.
Right.
But I, as I was saying, as long as we've got the funds for it, and I, it is scary to see how many areas of concern we all should have if we don't. I'm, I'm okay with it.
Well, I think asking for cash means that we're getting, they're getting more benefit than they realize, also.
As long as they, as long as everybody in all the counties are kept up front with it, or whatever.
Yeah, and I think, and we come back and train across the district, district wide. But just so you guys know, I do know last year when we were trying to get Ashley to go to the National Drug Court Conference, which is the big one, Teton County had offered to pay for her entire trip to go, she just couldn't go, due to timing.
Well, that's good. Appreciate it.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
With that, I'll make the motion that we go ahead and approve that travel money to those conferences out of the funds, opioid?
Opioid.
Opioid funds. I knew opiate wasn't right.
Close enough, though.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you, guys, very much, and Commissioner Bullock, I'll give you those numbers this week.
Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
I, I'm just worried every day that it's not
I figure. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you. Hey, you saying about the golf tournament?
Oh, yeah. Greg tomorrow's was doing the golf tournament. I don't remember the day, I just have help
July, June thirteenth.
June thirteenth, yep. I'm just helping them get it off the ground. If you want to golf, go golf.
Thank you.
All right, Todd?
Thank you. Todd Boger with Bannock County Juvenile Justice. I'm here to request a signature on the two agreements today. Both are with universities. The first one's Idaho State University. It's an affiliation agreement with Idaho State University on behalf of the CCA Division of Health Science Program. This, this agreement would allow us to work with the counseling department at ISU and take on possibly some interns. I think there's some, in, in talking with Dr. Yates at the university, there's some things in place with some possible grants that would allow for us to take some of those counseling students to work with the youth and families at the, the village in the upcoming months, pretty much next, next fall. So there's that, there's that affiliation agreement. And then Boise State College of Health Science Master Affiliation Agreement is the next one. And this is with the social work department. This would allow us to, to take on interns that are bachelor's level and master's level social workers. We have one that has reached out. These are basically students that are doing their, their studies online and are from the Pocatello area. I might add that, you know, the, the interns, if they're able to get in, you know, work with the AmeriCorps program, it actually provides the village with about twelve hundred hours of service per year, which is very beneficial to the village and the families that are being seen at the village and the youth. Without that, we could not operate as effectively with the volume of families that the youth were working with, so.
Would you share with the board some of those numbers you shared with me the other day, because it's, the impact the village is having is pretty incredible.
So the other day, we had, one of the public defenders ran some, some numbers from the Idaho Supreme Court. And if you bear with me for a minute, I'll pull it up, because I don't want to spout off numbers that are close but not quite right. So the village, we, we opened the doors July 1st, 2023. And when you look at the juvenile cases filed by county, let's put it in perspective, in 2020, we only had seven hundred, but that was during the COVID, so it's kind of a off, off year. But in 2021, there was twelve hundred and eighty-two juvenile cases filed in Bannock County. And then in 2020, well, 2021, twelve thou, one, one thousand two hundred and eighty-two. In '22, there was one thousand two hundred and ninety-three. In 2023, which we, we started the village halfway through the year, we dropped to one thousand one hundred and ninety, so there was one hundred less citations through the year. In 2024, there was eight hundred and sixty-five. So you're looking at about a four hundred, four hundred case drop. And then we pulled the numbers for 2025, but that was just through February, and there had been eighty-one cases in court, January and February. But if you times that by six, and we keep on that trajectory, trajectory, sorry, that'll put us around four hundred and eighty juvenile citations. So if you want to take a look, you know, about thirteen hundred to five hundred, it's a, a drop of eight hundred over the years the village has been working. And, and we have another thing that's, that's happening, and this is in direct relation. When we opened, we were getting about eighty-five percent of our referrals from law enforcement citations. Prosecutors are allowing us to do some prevention programs with the misdemeanor and status offense, citations of those first, first time offenders. But it was eighty-five percent. Our goal was to get upstream of the juvenile crime, right? So when they're receiving citations, to get help before. I ran some stats for the quarter before, this quarter, two quarters ago, and it, and we have gone towards fifty percent law enforcement and fifty percent community referrals. So I think there's becoming a culture shift in the community, and rather than citing kids to court, they're sending them to the village and, and doing it without law enforcement citations. And then this quarter, I ran the numbers, and it shows that it's forty-sixty, so forty percent law enforcement, sixty percent community referrals.
Wow.
So I, I always say, we're, we're heading in the right direction. We've come a long ways. We do have a ways to go, and we just keep working and pushing forward, and, but, but there's, we're starting to see some outcomes, I believe. And I don't have the detention numbers in front of me right now, but I was just in a community meeting, and right now in detention, there's three Bannock kids, where in the past, there was probably sixteen, ten to sixteen. And so numbers are way down in detention as well.
Yeah, when Todd shared those numbers with me, I wanted him to share them today, because that's a fantastic trajectory.
And I, you know, it's, it's, the village, there's, there's a lot of community efforts going on, too, to help us support those families with local providers and, you know, the school districts, the commissioners, the county. It's, it's, the university, I mean, they're providing a ton of support, too. So it's a, it's definitely a community effort in the way we're moving along.
I'd love to ask you, I understand the, the lowering of the numbers that are the citations. What about the other side of that? How much, what's your volume increasing of your services provided? I'm curious about that number, the walk-ins, that are family or whatever it is. What's your, what's your numbers doing on that level?
As far as the volume served?
The people that you, that youth or whoever it is that you're serving, I understand the citation site is going down, but I'm hoping the other number is maybe rising.
So, so, and without, if, I could pull it up on my apricot system real quick, but they
And don't worry about that.
They, they, I can just tell you that when we opened that first year, we did have a significant amount of referrals, and that, that maintains through the second year. I think we're kind of topping out. We're, we're probably averaging about a hundred and twenty referrals per quarter, you know, so a hundred and twenty families every three months that are coming through, getting screened and assessed.
I mean, that's what it's been, every time I've talked with you, is the, the ultimate goal is keep them out of jail, but on the other hand, keep them out of the cemetery, keep them out of everything else out there. So the, the more people that get to know about that, the more positive numbers we should have of, you know, doing wonderful things there, not because we have to, not somebody, because the court ordered, but people really want to use that.
Yeah, no, we, we are, and we, as far as keeping people alive, too, we, you know, we, we've worked out with the Behavioral Health Center, a direct admit process. And so these kids, on the screening and assessment tool, the first, the first two months we were open, I couldn't sleep at night, because there's a self-harm category on that assessment, and we didn't have the resources to get them. You know, those kids that are having ideations right away, and, and we work closely with the Behavioral Health Center, and there's a, there's a referral process. If they're, if they fit the criteria, twelve and older, we're able to get them admitted right away. And so, you know, I haven't looked at youth suicide numbers per year, but I can tell you that we're probably averaging probably ten to fifteen direct admits to BHC per year, and I think that's, I mean, saving lives. One of the big challenges is that the kids that are under that age of twelve, we don't have the resources to, to get them hospitalizedation as easily as we do if they're over twelve. But it's a, it's a process, right? And we, we'll take a look at what we're doing and build off it, you know?
Todd, could I get you to send me those numbers?
Absolutely.
All right, sorry for the, the term, but I've just
I'm glad I had my computers here. Otherwise, I would have been like
I took the chance. Any questions on these agreements?
I'd go ahead and make a motion that we sign the agreement with Boise State and ISU.
All right, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Continue to do great work.
Keep at it.
Buddy?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Buddy Romrell, Public Works Assistant Director. I'm just seeking approval for the rental of a mastic machine. We're hoping to rent this machine from Specialty Construction Supply out of Idaho Falls. What it does is it's like a, a three-foot box that will put down this mastic material over any alligatoring in the road, or cracking in the road, or rutting in the road. Last year, we did a, excuse me, a demo with Specialty on Lacy Road and had really good results with it. So we're hoping to continue this process and hopefully do it annually, so.
How much do you hope to get done in the two weeks?
So it's kind of a trial force to know exactly how far we're going to be able to go with the material. We're hoping to use about eight pallets worth of it, and we're thinking each pallet will be about two hundred and fifty to four hundred foot of road, so.
What roads you looking at?
Most of our maintenance this year, we're planning on doing all out in the Chubak Flats with chipping, paving, and this process, so. Kind of our thought was, is we could repair the, the cracking and alligatoring with this mastic and then chip over it, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
So is it mostly for cracking, or is it for potholes? Just the cracking?
You could use it, like, once you patched a pothole, and then go over the pothole, like, the, the asphalt patch with the mastic, but, yeah, it's mostly for alligatoring and rutting, and I don't know if you've noticed that, but like in Chubak, where we have all the, the pits and stuff like that, you'll get the rutting from the truck tracks. It'll actually fill that in and like self
So is that what they've done out there? There are strips about that, right?
That's exactly what it is, yep. All over in Chubak, where you see the big square marks going down the road, so.
They seem to be. And then they will chip and seal eventually over them.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and it won't look so, I guess, trashy looking with all the square marks everywhere.
It seems like those chuck holes are just the bane of every road and bridge existence. They pop out the same ones every year.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, any further questions?
No. I'll make a motion, we'll go ahead and approve that purchase and use of that stuff, mastic.
Mastic, yeah.
We have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go for it. Do your thing, Buddy.
Yeah, thank you, guys. Have a good day.
Buddy, will you send me the dates when you're going to pick it up and
Yes, I will, yes.
Anita and friends.
Anita Hyman, Bannock County Assessor. We are just over here today to kind of talk about commercial values that are going to be changing. At a later date, we will be over here about all our values before assessments go out, but we want to talk about commercial, because we know that they're done as admins, and there could be considerable more this year. So we just kind of want to bring that to your attention. And I'm going to, with that note, I'm going to turn it over to our Commercial Appraiser, Jason Hooker, to explain why and what's going on with our commercial.
Thank you. Jason Hooker, Commercial Appraiser, Assessor's Office. One of the things that we did this year is we had the opportunity, within our PROVAL system that we use for all of our appraisal, we have different pricing engines for residential versus commercial, and we have different ways that we update those and do our analysis. With the commercial, it's always been a little more confined on what we have access to. So this year, we had an opportunity with the state to do an update to our system and an update to that pricing. So that, they did some extensive testing to make sure everything was going to work with our systems. We have it now installed and implemented. And so what that's doing for us is giving us an update that is kind of five years in the making. What we were using before, up and through last year, was data from 2020. So what gets updated with that is the, the base pricing, so the per square foot rate where they build a cost estimate for a building, and then also the depreciation as a building ages. If it's not getting updates, it will continue to depreciate. So with those updates, they've brought all that new costing data to us, and it's allowing us to find areas that may have not perfectly kept up in previous years. One of the challenges we have with commercial appraisal is we have such a small window of what's actually going on in our market. We get a lot of residential data. With commercial, we just don't get a whole lot. And so with this new costing data, we're going to see some increases, and some of them could be fairly large. We're still working with that data to see where those are going to land. One of the things that we do within commercial is we then, you know, we don't want to just say, you know, the commercial property is going up a, a set percent, because there's all these little subcategories. You know, you have retail, offices, industrial storage, all of those things. So we try to tailor it to say, what is happening in our market? You know, we know that an office building is going to typically sell for more in Pocatello than it is in Aramo, even though it may cost the same to build. And, you know, conversely, we're going to see things in Laba that are going to sell for more, just the nature of how that town and how that economy is laid out. So we do use the available sales data that we have to say, okay, we've got the, the base information here. Now, how does our market differ throughout the county and throughout those things? So that's one of the big things that we're working on right now. We're continuing to do our best to build the relationships with the commercial property owners. Every year, we've increased the number of really good conversations we've had, and every year, we get a few more people that are willing to share their data with us, so we can help take a look. You know, if a business comes in and says, I don't agree with your value, we sit down and we say, let's take a look at your numbers, let's see where we're at, to see how that really matches up. So we continue to work on that. The more data that we can get from our local community, the, the more accurate that we can hope for that to be. And, let's see, what was the other thing I wanted to touch on with there? With the, the admin versus the in-person hearings, just kind of the way that I've looked at it, when you guys went to admin, it, it kind of made the commercial process more streamlined. And then as we go forward, you know, if you get to the point where you want to do more in-person hearings, I'm sure that one of the things you'll run into, as we did back in 2018, 2019, is we'll probably have people that are not here, that they're representatives or in other parts of the country. So there will probably be requests for Zoom and phone call, and just stuff that you guys will get to consider as you make your decisions.
I would like to clarify that this is not going to be another 2019.
Yeah, we're not expecting that.
We're not expecting it to be that. We're just expecting a more, an increase, yeah.
And, and that did, Anita did, saying that reminded me that one of the areas that we may see a large increase is commercial properties that we typically don't see any sales data on. You know, if you have a, a very large facility that they just don't sell a whole lot, these pricing updates are probably going to cause a, a bigger adjustment, because that's not data that we're typically going to see in this market, especially if you have a facility that maybe we have one of in the entire county.
So are you still using cost and income, the three different approaches to?
Yeah, cost, income, and the market approach.
Market approach.
Yeah, so that cost is really just kind of the foundation of it, and then we take the, the market, which is the sales, and the income, whenever those are shared with us, to tailor it to say, where are the different parts of our county that are differing from that kind of, that base model?
So your cost data that you've been using is five years oldish?
Yeah, so that was five years old, and we have ways that we can make small adjustments to that, but that's really based on the sales data that we're seeing, that income data that we're seeing. And we were having situations where you'd see a forty-year-old building sell, and even if we had marked it as a brand-new building, zero depreciation, the price, that, that initial price couldn't even reach what it was selling for. So then we look at, well, what are other levers that we can use within this program to get closer to that? And so with this updated pricing data, we, we have more solid information, and, you know, it, it just gives us a more stability that we feel comfortable with.
And do we have the same restriction or requirement on commercial to ninety to one-ten?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
So you said you had an update in this program, and you've run enough testing on this, that you feel confident as we go into this? I mean, in the last few years, every year, we've got a new program or something from the state, and that's kind of been our fallback. I don't want that to be our fallback. I want to make sure that we're good and that. The numbers that we put out there are the right numbers.
And that's a good question and a good concern. One of the concerns that we had early on in the winter, when we were talking with the, the state, is we wanted to make sure that everything was going to go smoothly. They actually involved some counterparts that used to be with the state that are They actually involved some counterparts that used to be with the state that are, they now work externally. And they did some really good testing for us, because we did attempt an update last year. And it just wasn't the right time to get everything lined up. And so we said, let's pause till 2025. And we got, I would say, all the right people involved to make sure that this went off really well.
It's good to hear.
We will not be, I mean, we're not gonna blend the program. We're not. I mean, we just need to get things where they are. And there's some new legislation coming in next year that will tighten the reins on how we look at ratio studies. So this year, we can do the same thing. Next year, we're gonna be tightening the reins a little bit. But we'll still be in the 90 to 110%, but there's gonna be some other parameters that we'll have to look at as well to make sure we're equitable across the board with all categories.
So historically, our commercials have been, I think, valued a little bit on the low end?
Yeah, typically, when we have sales come through, I would say we're, we're always, you know, we pass our ratio studies. The, the big thing there is, as we're looking at those few sales that come in, you have to cast a little bit wider net. With residential, we have more than enough sales data to just look back at the last 12 months. But, and, and we're not unique. This is a, a problem that pretty much all 44 counties still have. And when you're looking at those commercial sales, you have such a small amount that it's typical to go back sometimes anywhere from three to five years and say, what kind of trends do we see with what's going on?
So can you defend it? I mean, obviously, if you're, you know, you're bringing this up to a closer standard or whatever, when people start calling you and showing up on your doorstep, can you defend it, you know? And is it defensible? Nobody's gonna like it. But, but is it something that literally you say, here's the data, here's the whatever, it is what it is? I guess that's the simple question of it is. Is it defensible?
Yeah, I feel really good about that. And in June, you know, we did, we haven't had a whole lot of commercial appeals. But we have a lot of conversations across the street. And I would say, eight or nine out of 10 people that come in and sit down with us, and we go over their numbers and our numbers, they get it. You know, nobody likes an increase because of the potential impacts down the road. But most of those people say, you know, I understand your numbers, and I think I can agree with your numbers. Usually, it's just if it's the year that that segment went up within commercial that they said, I, I just wanted to come and sit down because I saw a big change, and I wanted to see how you were getting there.
Thank you. When we talked before, we talked about doing some PR to kind of let the public know. Have you talked with Emma about that?
I have talked with her. In fact, I actually invited her to this, but she, I'm sure, had other things going. But yeah, so she could kind of get some information, so we can start getting something out there. We're gonna need to do that with RESI as well. But, so we're gonna kind of get things going at the PR end of it.
Is that something you heard in the past, is if we'd have known, we would have been?
Oh, yeah. People say that if we'd have known what was coming, it would have made it a little easier. So we're gonna make sure that happens. It still might not make it easy, but we're gonna let them know what's happening. And then, like I said, in May, we'll be back with hopefully some more final ideas. Definitely with RESI, we'll be able to update that as well. We're not quite there yet with RESI.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Anything else?
No, I, I just really want to encourage people to come into your office. I mean, the appeal process and stuff like that, that's where it needs to start, right there. And with, last year, that was so much better.
One of the really big things that I've tried to make it a point to say to every person that comes in in June is if you ever have questions and concerns, you don't have to wait till June. And so every year, we have more and more people come all year long. I had a business owner stop by a few weeks ago that, as soon as he finished his taxes, he said, I want to bring you all of my financial data so that you can have that to make, you know, the most informed assessment that we can.
And this year, we will have, well, we will have basically three full weeks to do that, because June 2nd is the first Monday in June. And so it gives us three weeks. But unfortunately, that first week is all about mailing. So if my plan goes as planned, I hope to actually get them out actually a week earlier than that. The problem is, is we have to have them to our mailing vendor two weeks early. So that makes us less than four weeks out of getting all the values certified right now, as of right now. And so we're reaching for that goal, and hopefully we'll make it. So we can add an extra week, cause we would like to do that. So that, but that's where we are. But we have to have them in the mail by June 2nd.
It's not hopefully, we'll make it.
Yeah.
There you go.
Well, I just appreciate the communication you're doing. I read your newsletter. You're doing a great job communicating that way and the work all of you are doing. Like I said, I was over at Anita's office the other day, and she had a stack this high. She was plowing through. She said Randy's got the same size on his desk, so appreciate all the work you guys are doing for everybody. So, thank you. And then if there's nothing else.
Thank you.
We'll see you again.
Thanks.
All right, next on the agenda is Resolution 2025-31, which is denying the validation of Lower Rock Creek Road. Any discussion on this?
Nope.
Okay, when Commissioner Moser gets back, we'll make a motion on that. After that, we have the consent agenda, which is alcohol licenses, certificate of residency approval. There's some salary rate approval forms and minutes. Commissioner Moser, do you have any question on the resolution about denying the road validation for Rock Creek?
Nope.
Okay, I would, I'd move that we approve Resolution 2025-31. All in favor, say aye.
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 And then the consent agenda, any questions, comments, or concerns on that?
Nope. No. With that, I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda items.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What is that here? Yeah, I did chance. Guess he did.
Nope, I went to you first of all. He was busy down here.
I still see some of these showing as Ken, some of them still show as Ken.
You're never gonna get departments to use this system.
As long as there's no other person besides me trying.
I can have them put SOB on there if you want.
Hey, I've been called worse than that.
That stands for sorry, old buzzard.
Well, they just got my name on there and took yours off.
They did send them out to the departments. They just.
Yeah, it's fine.
Saved them on their computers.
As long as I'm not illegal. Wouldn't be the first time.